Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, April 22nd, 2013 meeting of the Quincy City Council to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Coughlin.
President.
Counsel Croll. Counsel Gatto. Counsel Hughes. Counsel LaForest. Counsel McNamee.
President.
Counsel Palmucci. President McFaulin.
Present.
Counsel Croll. Six members we have in the quorum.
Okay. I'd like to ask you all to stand this evening for a prayer of divine guidance. And as you stand tonight for a moment, I'd like to keep in our thoughts the tragic events of the last week. First of all, I'd like to remember the victims of the Marathon bombing, those who died and those who were injured and all their families. Secondly, I'd like to give thanks to the first responders and all the volunteers in the medical tents, the doctors, the nurses, the technicians, who were critical in saving lives. When they got up last Monday morning and went to work or to volunteer at the Marathon, they had no idea of what the day would bring. We are fortunate in Boston to have the best medical care in the world. And thirdly, to our police, to our fire, to our EMS personnel. Their quick response and their highly-trained skills were put to the ultimate test as they were put in harm's way last Monday. The courage and professionalism shown by our public safety officials quickly stabilized the area and got both participants and guests to safety. And fourth, for the leadership provided by so many federal, state, and local officials, sporting events, entertainers, and private citizens, not only to keep us safe, but to keep us proud to be Americans. Proud to be free. Boston proud. I also, as I always do, ask you in your thoughts and in your moment of prayer to remember the men and women serving in the armed forces, both here and abroad, and also for the public safety officials of the city of Quincy. Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel LaForest is present.
Thank you.
Eight members present?
Seven. We're all set.
First item on the agenda is I'd like to recognize Counselor Brian McNamee, who would like to present an award to Mr. Steve Dunleavy. Counsel McNamee.
Thank you, Mr. President, for taking this opportunity to recognize public service. Stephen, could you join me?
Yes.
I had a short stint on the zoning board. It's one of the hottest corners to serve on as a volunteer. You're involved with a lot of issues that are neighbor to neighbor and really have tremendous impact on the way our neighborhoods take shape. It's not an easy role. Stephen, we want to recognize you tonight for the valuable service. Three years of volunteer service on that board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And if I could, I'd like to read a commendation that we prepared. The Quincy City Council recognizes Steve Dunleavy in recognition of three years of distinguished service and outstanding dedication while serving on the Quincy Zoning Board. It is a privilege to honor you for your high standards of integrity and professional expertise. You have worked tirelessly and successfully to improve our community's quality of life and to make the city of Quincy a better place in which to live. Stephen, we're extremely proud of you, and we thank you for all that you've done. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Could I also recognize the Chair of the Zoning Board?
So it was a pleasure to welcome you, Mr. President.
And of course, Marty's never had a loss for words, so I'm going to give him the podium.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk, members of the council. Really, Steve came to every meeting, I will say this, totally prepared. He asked questions that were advanced for the committee we sit on. You know why, Steve? You've read your book, you know your rules, you know your laws, and thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you, Marty. I'm wondering, should we take a picture in the well, Mr. President?
The Chair will take a brief recess. Before we get started on the rest of the meeting, I would like to acknowledge we have Farmer Mayor Jim Sheets in the House. Jim, would you like to say a few words and introduce us to some of your guests?
It's a pleasure to come back here. Always a pleasure. I'm glad.
Come on up, you have the podium. Jim, you're on TV.
Yeah, might run again. But it's always a pleasure to come back to a city council meeting, having served on the council for 16 years. I often consider those the finest years of my life. I chose to be a ward counselor all 16 years. There was a reason for that. That's because, as a ward counselor, you're closer to the people than any other elected official. And when you accomplish things, they feel it, they understand it, they know it, and they appreciate it. And I have nothing but such great respect for Ward Four, so it's a pleasure for me to come back here this evening. And I'm here with a number of students from Quincy College who attend my class on state and local government. And I try every semester to get them into a city council meeting to see how government actually works. You know, and democracy is a very complex process. There are so many levels and layers of government. But you know, when you sit here and you listen to the city council and you listen to what is said and the questions that are asked, you begin to understand government better. But you also gain a much greater appreciation for the tremendous amount of work that people do at the local level of government. When you start to think, and here's the academic in me, that there are 87,000 elected bodies across this country that make policy, people elected by their peers, people who then serve and help to develop the policies under which those people will live. It's a marvelous system, and it was a great honor for me to be involved in it for 20 years. I wouldn't trade it for the world. And, Mr. President, I want to thank you for inviting me to speak. Thank you.
President. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for unanimous consent to take an item out of order if we could. Veteran Services, item number two. I know that Tom Stansberry is here, and I wonder if we might be able to do that.
All in favor? All opposed? No, the item is under consideration, and that is item number two on the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two, Mr. President, upon the recommendation of Director of Municipal Finance.
Waived the reading by Counsel McNamee, seconded by Counsel Hughes on the motion. Any discussion? Counsel Hughes.
Mr. President, I'd just make a motion to approve.
Sure.
Been made and seconded. Okay. Clerk, Mr. Clerk?
$65,000 retransferred for veteran services. Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
Eight members, the order is adopted.
The order passes eight to nothing. That's it. Okay.
Thank you very much. The veterans and the family.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I've got a motion on the floor by Counsel Coughlin to approve the minutes of the last meeting, seconded by Counsel Croll. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda.
Next item is the first item on the agenda, Mr. President, appropriation of $210,000 to elections, personal services, contractual expenses, for the cost of two special elections.
Waive the reading. You're second on the motion?
Yes.
Any discussion on the special election? Okay.
Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
Eight to zero, Mr. President.
Next item on the agenda, number—
Next item is number three. Appropriation of $40,000 to park power and current expense.
Waived the reading by Counsel McNamee, seconded by Counsel Croll. On the motion, any discussion?
Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Finn—I'm sorry—Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
Eight members, Mr. President.
The appropriation passes. Item number four on the agenda.
Item number four is an appropriation of $58,293, $7,575—
Waived the reading by Counsel McNamee, seconded by Counsel Coughlin.
Agent Clement Wither.
On the motion?
Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
Eight members, Mr. President.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, number five.
Appropriation of $150,000 to fire overtime.
Waived the reading by Counsel McNamee, seconded by Counsel Coughlin.
Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
Eight members, Mr. President.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number six.
Item number six, appropriation of $477,000—
Waive the reading—
—suspending ordinance committee, new plan in front of us.
Seconded by—seconded by Counsel Coughlin. On the motion, Counsel McNamee.
This was a matter that we already discussed in committee. We have a situation where the—when this first came in, the amount was wrong, and what I'd like to do is take the original order. That's order number 2012-229.
Correct.
Place that on file. I understand we have a corrected order.
It's 067. 2013-067 is the corrected order.
For the $477,800,000, and—
Okay. The motion's got to pass. On the motion, you're second, Counsel Coughlin.
Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
Eight members, Mr. President.
Okay. Item number seven on the agenda.
Item number seven, appropriation of $21,000 to solicitor contractual for land-taking on Quincy Ave. and East and West Howard Streets.
Waive the reading— Counsel McNamee, seconded by Counsel Palmucci. On the motion, Counsel Palmucci.
Counsel Croll.
Oh, Counsel Croll, I'm sorry. I apologize, Counsel Palmucci. I was looking at you.
That's all right.
Live from New York, you are—
Live from New York. Thank you, Mr. President. It is obviously with great anticipation that we're moving forward on this reconstruction of this East Howard Quincy Avenue project. It's been a long time in the making. There's a lot of people that have been involved, in particular Majority Leader Mariano, who has been there for day one, and I can tell you that this was one of the first issues that, you know, I got involved with. Having come into and now sitting as the Ward Two City Council, a couple things. We had a public hearing probably last December, January, actually Counsel Gatto was in attendance amongst other elected officials, and this $21,000 really sets as the preface to what I believe is going to be a good story of a million and a half dollar renovation of an intersection that is clearly ailing, to put it politely. And, you know, we'll be the beneficiary of new signalization, new curbing, new roadwork, and actually a street that lines up and pedestrians, you know, as well as motorists can safely proceed. So, again, I am very grateful for the partnerships, and, you know, it is, it's a story about people working together, and most importantly, it's the right thing for the residents, so those folks living in the East Howard Quincy Avenue Bauer Road sections of Ward Two, this is huge, and this is real. So, I appreciate my colleagues' continued support, and if you're looking or wondering what a happy city councilor face looks like, you're looking at it right now. So, thanks for the time, Mr. President, and—
Motion's been made and seconded. The order ought to be approved.
Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel Mc—
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
Eight members, the order is adopted.
The appropriation is approved.
Next item, Mr. President, is number eight on the calendar. Accepting a gift of $165 for D.A., various donors in memory of Lieutenant John Morton, Quincy Police Department.
Motion to accept by Counsel McNamee, seconded by Counsel Coughlin.
Counsel Coughlin.
Big D.A.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
Gift is accepted, eight to zero.
Okay.
Number nine.
Next item, number nine.
Amending municipal code regarding Quincy Community Preservation Committee, make-up of community preservation committee. This is an order from the mayor's office.
Chair recognizes Counsel Coughlin, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know and may recall, my colleagues would recall, back on July 8th last year, Governor Patrick signed the FY 2013 state budget, which included an Act to Sustain the Community Preservation, and was Chapter 139, Section 69 to 83 of the Acts of 2012. And this legislation amended eight different sections of the Community Preservation Act enabling statute, which is Mass. General Law's Chapter 44B. I have provided tonight to each counselor a summary of those changes to the law, section by section, just as a refresher. I know that we were all aware of them last summer when it was happening. And as you know, Mr. President, the residents of Quincy approved the CPA by ballot question in the municipal election held on November 7th, 2006. And as Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and this body's liaison to that committee for the last—well, for the last six years, since the adoption of the CPA, I can report to you that it's been one of the most fruitful and beneficial legislative endeavors undertaken in the city. Over that time, 74 different projects of varying scope and description have been approved by the Community Preservation Committee with an aggregate value of over $13 million. We have garnered more than $3.3 million in state trust fund distributions, and we've leveraged nearly an equal amount in other grants and invested funds. And each of those 74 projects, and all the investment that has been made into open space acquisition, affordable housing, historic preservation, and recreation is something that I think that we ought to be very proud of. They have taken shape and touched every ward in this city, and these projects have made our city more environmentally stable, sustained our historic foundation, and made our city a more desirable place to live. And most of the credit goes to the many volunteer and nonprofit organizations and groups that have brought forth the proposals to the Community Preservation Committee and to the volunteer members of that committee itself, that I have had the tremendous good fortune to work with, people like Cole Barry, John Brennan, Connie Driscoll, Maureen Mazremus, Mary Ann Morris, Steve Perdiows, Don Powers, Tony Ricci, our director, Lisa Romola, and our intrepid Assistant City Solicitor, Deidre Hall, who is here this evening. The amendments that the legislature adopted last July resulted in the necessity of this related matter before us tonight, and this amendment to our local CPC ordinance is critically important in terms of the work that we are in the midst of right now. And we are reviewing more than 20 applications for this round of community preservation funding, and approval of this amendment to our Community Preservation Committee ordinance will be a necessary precursor with regard to our forthcoming recommendations to the mayor and to this body. By its adoption, it will allow us to carry out the legislative intent from last July by approving funding for projects that fit the definitions and language changes that were made. Adoption of this component of the changes made by the legislature will be relatively simple, and it should be referred to ordinance and to advertising, and then brought back before the full council for adoption. It's something that we need to do within the next few weeks, because we will be making our recommendations to the mayor, and then they will be brought before the council in June. And in order to approve some of the projects that we're going to be approving, we need this language in place. I know that there'll be somewhat of a companion matter that'll be discussed in just a few minutes. It's a substantive change as well to the Community Preservation Act, and it will allow for us to expand the pool of local revenues that will qualify us for a more enhanced state trust fund match, and thereby give us more in the CPA pool of funds to work with. If that one is slightly more complex, it's not only requires a ballot question, but it also will require action by this body, and I've actually drafted an order to bring before the body. I've referred it to the Assistant Solicitor, Deidre Hall, for her review, and to the committee for their review as well. So in terms of this action tonight, we should get this into the ordinance committee. I will be having a ordinance committee meeting coming up. I just spoke to the clerk of committees, and this will be one of the matters on for that agenda, and then we can bring it back before the body for final approval.
Is there sufficient time between now and May 6th to get this advertised, and do we need a—is there a 10-day advertising period where it's amending city ordinances, or how long of a period of time would be necessary?
I believe it would require 10 days, but I'll defer to the city clerk in terms of the timeframe necessary.
Okay, because we—
Today's the 22nd.
Today's the 22nd.
I'm visiting the 24th.
Okay, so we will have time to take action on May 6th, then?
If I get it to sun tomorrow, we have time. We can get it done.
Okay. All right. Matter's going to be referred to ordinance and advertise, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number—
10.
10.
This is a resolve from Counsel Palmucci relative to preservation of Fowl Meadow.
Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you putting this on the agenda. I'll be very brief. I think that the resolution speaks for itself. First of all, just to briefly introduce, I would hope that we'd be able to vote on this tonight without—if there's no objection from my colleagues, as I would like to forward this to the legislature, or at least our delegation, to let them know that we support this measure. I'm asking for a resolution that we support H. 818, an act relative to the preservation of land designated areas of critical concern, and H. 819, an act relative to the preservation of Fowl Meadow. This is two pieces of legislation filed by Representative Walter Timulty from Milton. I know it's supported at least by Representative Ayers. He's the only member of our delegation that I've had the opportunity to speak to at length about this particular matter. Fowl Meadow is an area in the Blue Hills Reservation, which is home to some endangered species, as well as a large area—it's quite a unique area, because it encompasses both upland, open meadows, as well as pristine wetlands and immature woods. I'm asking that we support Representative Timulty's efforts, as there is a proposal to build a high-density residential development in the area off Brush Hill Road. It's 300 rental units and townhouses called Mill Creek Development, and quite frankly, it threatens the Fowl Meadow area of the Blue Hills Reservation in the Canton-Milton area. I think that—I've read the legislation. I believe it's valuable to protecting this area. It would prevent the negative impact to the area, including draining of the wetlands or altering the topography, and I would ask that my colleagues support this measure. I did speak to representatives of QEN. I believe they are supportive. They were going to send a letter. I don't know that that arrived. I do have a letter from the Friends of Blue Hills. I think it was included in the packet, also speaking in support of this resolution, and I would ask that the body support this resolution, and we send it off to the legislature noting our support of Representative Timulty's legislation.
Motion approves. You're second on that? Seconded by Counsel LaForest. On the motion, any discussion? Mr. Clerk?
Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Gatto.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaulin.
Yes.
It will be forwarded to the mayor for his signature.
That's correct. Okay. All right, item number 11.
Item number 11, Mr. President, is a home rule petition sponsored by Counsel LaForest relative to a status of John Patrick Ryan as it pertains to application of the Quincy Police Department.
Counsel LaForest.
Thank you. One second here. There is a—Sergeant John Ryan is retired Quincy police. There is a provision in the—is an amendment to the Constitution that allows for passage of service, kind of a legacy clause, would you? When someone is a municipal police officer, disabled retiree, and that is what we are—we've worked with the solicitor's office on this this evening. Sergeant Johnny Ryan has served the Quincy Police Department for 30 years, 20 of those as sergeant. Most recently, he served as Counselor Coughlin's community police officer. We're introducing this home rule petition to allow for John Patrick Ryan, who is his son, to come onboard our Quincy Police Department. The Ryan family has a great tradition of service here in Quincy and in Boston. Sergeant Ryan's father was a retired Boston police sergeant. His brother, Ed Ryan, many of you know, is a detective in our drug unit, one of very proactive detective here in the city of Quincy. The Ryan family is a recipient of the Good Neighbor Award in Marymount. Everyone, many are familiar with Peg Ryan, and in particular, her baked goods down at the Marymount canteen are very popular. So the Ryan family has a great tradition of service, and we're looking to pass that legacy on to John Patrick. I know Counsel Coughlin wants to join me in some accolades. We do miss working with Sergeant Ryan. He was—many of us have worked with him in his capacity through community policing, supporting all of our ward officers, so, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do very enthusiastically join Counsel LaForest in this initiative. I had the pleasure of working with Sergeant Johnny Ryan when he was the Ward Three Community Police Officer. I can tell you, there was never a situation where he wasn't there, and on top of it, you know, quality of life issues arise in wards throughout the city, and there's an important partnership between a ward counselor and a community police officer, and I can't tell you how significant, you know, it is for all of us sitting here. I had an uncle who was a beat cop in Boston way back in the '50s, and I think that that's probably where community policing really started, and Sergeant Ryan really carried out the true measure of it. I will also never forget the day standing down at the Island of Flags in Ford Square when the call came across the radio of an officer down, and it was Sergeant Ryan. We all rushed from that event. It was—I believe it was the dedication of that Island of Flags. We all—all of us there who heard the call rushed down to the scene of the accident We all, all of us there who heard the call rushed down to the scene of the accident involving Sergeant Ryan. It was a devastating accident for him physically and, you know, we certainly, we all miss him and his service to the city as a police officer and certainly would hope that his son can pick up the torch. So I second this initiative and I thank Council La Forest for bringing this forward.
Motion remains seconded. The President's. Counselor Palmucci.
Just very briefly, I think it's an interesting time to have this before us, given the events of the previous week in Boston, and I just wanted to speak to that. Probably never before in our history of this area or perhaps even in the nation have we as civilians had such an opportunity to watch police work live. The events of the past week unfolding on televisions across the country, across the area, across the world, and watching police work actively to protect and serve 24 hours a day on cable. You could watch that. You could watch them fighting for us, getting into the thick of things for us. And it reminds us of the sacrifice that our law enforcement officers make every day on our behalf and the tradition and the devotion being so much a part of what they put into their job. And I think that this is just a perfect timing to have this before us because the Ryan family is such an embodiment of that tradition and honor that we have in law enforcement. And I will obviously be supporting this. And I just think it's worth noting that the Ryan family so embodies that tradition that we expect and we've come to expect and over the past week really, really saw firsthand. So I would certainly be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Councilor Coughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Crowell.
Yes.
Councilor Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. President McFaul.
Yes.
Eight members. The order is adopted and go to the mayor for signature.
Okay. Item number 12.
Item number 12, these are resolves, a resolve from Council Gattro seeking creation of a ballot question, ballot question for Quincy voters to allow other municipal revenues to be considered by Commonwealth as eligible under Community Preservation Act.
Council Gattro.
Mr. President, this dovetails nicely with what Council Coughlin, who serves in the Community Preservation Committee here locally, just passed out, which was Section 3 that references that, a new optional commercial exemption, excuse me. Section 3 allows communities to adopt CPA at the ballot with a minimum of 1% property tax surcharge and dedicate additional municipal revenues, such as hotel motel taxes, excise taxes, to their CPA fund up to the full 3%. This language was crafted with extraordinary help from the Community Preservation Committee Coalition, if you will, in Massachusetts. Catherine Roth is the deputy there. She was extraordinarily helpful. She said that since the passage of the amendments to the Community Preservation Act statewide last year, several communities have come forward and put on the ballot and passed what's known as the Blended CPA. And the Blended CPA essentially allows other municipal sources, in addition to the property tax levy, to be considered by the state for matching funds. We in the city of Quincy have several municipal sources, including the hotel motel tax, that historically has been used for some CPA-eligible expenses. We have other sources, like many communities, the meals tax, and I know the mayor has dedicated the meals tax to educational funding. But the purpose of the resolve is basically to ask the city solicitor to craft some language that we could potentially vote on, to put on the ballot for the voters. And what it asks the voters to do is to allow the city of Quincy to submit, not require, but allow the city of Quincy to submit for consideration some blended revenue streams, including CPA funding and other municipal revenue streams, on an annual basis for reimbursement by the state. In 2012, our local CPA surcharge revenues were about $1.2 million and we received $339,617 in a state match. That's not money paid for by local taxpayers. In addition to that, we derived over $1 million in hotel motel tax revenues. But before the change to the CPA, we could not put that in and be considered for state match. If the voters were to pass this, if we were to get on the ballot and the voters were to pass it, that could be, you know, some portion of those revenues, recognizing that we can't use tourism, but those that are eligible, which could be open space or recreation investments, could be eligible for additional state match in subsequent rounds, Rounds 2 and 3. I've had the opportunity to learn a little bit more about this with the auditor. We had discussions with the Community Preservation Coalition on this. So the nature of the resolution is, much of it is their language, their suggestion based on their experience. They're happy to work with our Solicitor's Office to put together some language that's both understandable enough to the voter but allows us the maximum flexibility to get the state match. So what I'd like to do is refer this to the city solicitor, perhaps put it in the Environment Committee, Environment and Public Health Committee. I think that's probably the most appropriate committee for it to go in. And my hope is, from what I understand, it need not get on the ballot or necessarily be passed, action taken by this body until September. But my sense is that it would be of value and my desire would be to have action taken by the city council in June before we recess for the summer. I think it gives an opportunity then for five months, four and a half months, to educate the voters on what it's all about. There are so many ballot questions that we look at two days before we have to cast a vote and we don't quite know. So if we could get it at least approved for positioning on the ballot or voted on to be considered by June, I think that would give voters ample time to be educated on the issue.
Has our own Community Preservation Committee looked at this?
We can refer to them as well.
And is this going to require an ordinance change also?
It may well.
Okay, so I just want to say if you want to refer to all those committees at once?
Sure.
Get the whole?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's refer to the Community Preservation Committee, the Ordinance Committee, the Environmental and Health in the Solicitor's Office.
And I'll yield to Council Coughlin.
Sorry, Council Coughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, this is one, and I commend the Council for bringing this forward. This is one of two steps that need to take place in order for this amendment of the Community Preservation Act to take hold here in the city of Quincy. There is an order that needs to be, and I'd be happy to append that order to this resolution with, they can go in as separate documents. I've actually, the Community Preservation Committee has talked about this and, you know, in terms of what we need to do to move forward. I had drafted but held in abeyance an order that would go, I think nicely with Council Gattro's resolution. And I've spoken with Deidre Hall, who's here this evening. She's taken a look at it and only had one suggested language change, just to add the words "as amended." Because what we did earlier this evening, what was introduced, is going to amend the act here in the city so that the order that the council will act upon in conjunction with Council Gattro's resolution to create a ballot question will reflect "as amended." So I'll be happy to bring this up. We're having a Community Preservation Committee meeting on May 9th. It's our next meeting. So we can certainly put, I've asked Lisa Ramola to put this issue on the agenda for that meeting and then we can move it forward. I think it's, I think as Council Gattro indicated, it's an important and valuable step that we can take. I think we're going to, you know, to benefit from it across the board. So I think it's good work all the way around. So.
The matter's been referred. Okay. Item 13 on the agenda has been removed from the agenda. It's not quite ready to go yet. Be ready at the next meeting. Mr. Clerk, do we have any communications or reports from the mayor or other city boards?
We have none.
We have none. Do we have any unfinished business of preceding meetings?
We have none.
Reports of committee? Council La Forest.
Yes. Earlier this evening, we had a Public Works Committee meeting. We had three items on the agenda. One I would like to bring out of committee, it's Council Order 2013-035. It's an easement from Verizon. Thank you. Relative to 271 C Street. This is a situation where there was anchoring on private property, you know, attached to a tree in a backyard. The tree was deteriorating, being removed, needed to stabilize the infrastructure out there and is going to be installing an anchor in that 271 C Street is the cobblestone property, which many of you know is an open space parcel. Part of my concern when this came in was that there are two double poles immediately adjacent that have been there for a very long time. They had made the commitment to clean those two up. It's actually both adjacent poles are double poles. So they will be anchoring for the one, Pole 67 and 271 C Street, removing the two adjacent double poles. I move positive recommendation.
Motion's been made and seconded by Council Coughlin on the motion. Mr. Clerk.
Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. President McFaul.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You know, two other matters reviewed in committee that have been left in committee, Council Order 2012-243, the DEP order relative to the DPW yard, and the IT Director did an update on GIS. So those were discussed earlier this evening, but no votes taken.
Do you want to leave those in committee? You want to place them on file?
I think the IT will place on file. We did want to, there are two outstanding matters relative to the DEP order, have benchmark, deadlines in October, so we will be reviewing that prior to those dates.
Okay, so the motion will be to keep, Council Order 2013-040 will be placed on file.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, 040, okay.
Is that needed to vote or all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay.
I need that one back.
We need that one back. Reports of committee? Council Coughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. From the Ordinance Committee, we have eight traffic ordinances this evening. 2013-051 offered by Council Palmucci to install no parking on the west side of Dobel Street from Larry Street to West Street and do not enter Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM on Dobel Street, West Street. And this has been okayed by the Traffic Division and I would move a positive recommendation.
Motion by Council Coughlin, seconded by Council Palmucci on the motion. Any discussion?
Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. President McFaul.
Yes.
Eight members, Mr. President.
Eight members, the ordinance has passed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item is 2013-052, offered again by Council Palmucci to install "do not enter" Monday through Friday, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Larry Street at Willard Street. This has been advertised and a positive recommendation is offered on that as well.
Motion by Council Coughlin, seconded by Council Palmucci on the motion.
Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. Yes. President McFaul.
Yes.
Eight to zero, Mr. President.
Eight to nothing, you ought to pass this. Council Coughlin.
The next item is 2013-054, Mr. President, offered by Council Hughes to install no parking on the west side of Bridge Street from Adams Street to along the railroad tracks fence and no parking on south side of Bridge Street from Adams Street to Hancock Street. This was also okayed by the Traffic Department and I move a positive recommendation.
Motion by Council Coughlin, seconded by Council Hughes on the motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. Yes. President McFaul.
Yes.
Eight to zero, Mr. President.
Eight to nothing, you ought to pass this. Council Coughlin.
The next item is 2013-054, Mr. President, offered by Council Hughes to install no parking on the west side of Bridge Street from Adams Street to along the railroad tracks fence and no parking on south side of Bridge Street from Adams Street to Hancock Street. This was also okayed by the Traffic Department and I move a positive recommendation.
Motion by Council Coughlin, seconded by Council Hughes on the motion.
Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. Yes. President McFaul.
Yes.
Eight to zero, Mr. President.
You ought to pass this. The order passes, eight to zero.
Next item, Mr. President, 2013-056, offered by Council La Forest to install handicap parking at 39 Peterson Road. This was approved by the Traffic Department and I move a positive recommendation.
Motion by Council Coughlin, seconded by Council Crowell on the motion.
Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. Yes. President McFaul.
Yes.
Eight to zero, Mr. President.
Eight to nothing, you ought to pass this. Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. Yes. President McFaul.
Yes.
Eight members, Mr. President.
Next item, Mr. President, 2013-057, offered by Council La Forest to delete the handicap parking sign at 9 Quarter Deck Road, apartment number 4. This was originally approved in 2003 and this was, this removal has been approved by the Traffic Department and I move a positive recommendation.
Motion's been made by Council Coughlin, seconded by Council La Forest on the motion.
Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. Yes. President McFaul.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The final submission this evening is 2013-058, offered by Council La Forest to delete the handicap parking sign on Wall Street behind 1173 C Street. This was originally installed by way of an order of 2011. This removal has been okayed by the Traffic Department and I move a positive recommendation.
Motion's been made by Council Coughlin, seconded by Council La Forest on the motion.
Council Coughlin.
Yes.
Council Crowell.
Yes.
Council Gattro.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council La Forest.
Yes.
Council McNamee.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
President McFaul.
Yes.
Eight members, Mr. President.
Eight members, the order passes. Eight ordinances tonight in traffic ordinance, we put up five signs and took down three. We're starting to win the battle. We're going to lose the war, but we're starting to win the battle.
Less sign pollution.
Anything else, reports from you on this side of the table?
None here.
Over here, Council Gattro.
Oh, sure. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. President, recognizing that we have representatives from Quincy College in the audience as the Chairman of the Downtown and Economic Development Committee. I do have a question through you to Mr. Fatsy's. Jim, it was last July that the MBTA, without notice, closed the parking garage at Quincy Center Tea Station. And subsequent to that, I put a resolution in on September 10th. I took the opportunity to go in and talk to the mayor and he indicated to me that he was working closely with the MBTA and others to come up with the plan, the right plan for that. And I understand that plans take time. And I was just wondering, it's been, September 10th was the date of the resolution. This is now April. And if you could either, A, give us an update on that? I mean, I don't want to necessarily have a committee meeting on it, but it would be nice to get some concrete insight where things are, whether it's a letter that comes back through the committee or from you now with a little bit of insight as to if anything happened. Whatever you think the best approach would be.
I think, as the counselor knows, we're currently watching the MBTA look at its funding mechanism. It's been very, very public that we're currently waiting to see how the MBTA will go funding going forward. going forward. As, and as many at home may not know, that there's been active conversation with the MBTA regarding the parking garage. They, the mayor has worked with the MBTA, also with a group that represents the city, to try to ascertain if there are any federal funding opportunities for the parking, for not just the parking garage, but the entire tea station as a repair, replace situation. What I would suggest is that we try to get a formalized report from the MBTA as an interim gap period. As you know, the mayor does sit on the MBTA, does actually chair the MBTA Advisory Committee. So there's been a lot of conversation regarding the tea station. I think a formal response to this committee, to the council is probably due. So let's, I'll go before the mayor and ask him to prepare one and have something come back formally, a letter to the council. And after you see the letter, if you'd like, you know, to get some more particulars, we'll move it from there.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. President. And a second question from the Downtown Committee is, did we pick a date to have a comprehensive update from Beale Street Works?
We have not.
But you anticipate that being June, correct?
We hope to.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Can't give you a concrete.
Well, the reason I ask is whether or not I should set a committee meeting, you know? I mean, I know your council agenda is busy. And originally, and I am extraordinarily indebted to the president of the city council for putting this in front of this body during meeting nights. I know oftentimes these are committee issues. So I just want to, I mean, one of the things that, as the chairman of the Downtown Committee, I believe that there's value to quarterly updates. We haven't met that necessarily, but you strike a balance and you bring it before the whole body. We have the opportunity to get it televised, whereas committee meetings, not all of them, I know QA TV does a great job, but not all of them get televised. But I just wouldn't want to let it slip. I know that there are some deadlines in it, especially around the parkingway. I know we were waiting for almost an imminent groundbreaking. That's what I keep hearing. And so there are just a lot of questions out there that folks have, and I know that this body and certainly the committee has. So whether we as a complete body do that, Mr. President, or you defer to me as the chair of the committee, I leave that to you. But I would like to schedule something before we recess.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports, candidates? Okay, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is presentations of petitions and memorials and remontances. Counsel Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am quite pleased to congratulate our council colleague, Brian Palmucci, on the birth of his first baby. Congratulations to Brian and Allison on little baby Violet, who was born about a month early. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, he was late. And I guess I'd just also like to take opportunity of thanks to the Quincy Police Department for their efforts this past week. I know that we had officers in our K-9 unit and our special operations really in town in Boston around the clock. And really, they logged a lot of hours in support of the metro Boston region. So I just wanted to thank those officers who were in Boston responding and those that were kind of backfilling here in Quincy. We really are very appreciative of them and their efforts in this past week. So I wanted to thank them.
Very good. Counsel Coughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually wanted to thank you for your words at the opening of this meeting tonight. I think they were very special. And I want to kind of tag-team with Counsel Forrest. One of the things, if you looked in the background of a lot of those images, actually from Monday forward last week, what you saw were a lot of citizen soldiers. There wasn't really much in terms of recognition of what they did. But I know personally how involved they were because my son-in-law was called up and deployed for a number of activities throughout the whole week, including the security for the president as perimeter guarding at the scene in Boston for a lot of the other activities in terms of the investigative procedures. The technology that you saw, what they call FLARE, forward-looking electronic monitoring of the boat where they found the young man, that was something that was perfected in the military. It was military technology that was used by the state police to locate this man. It was kind of eerie. You saw that when they were looking for Osama bin Laden. It was the same technology that was used. There wasn't a lot of, in fact, there was, I don't know if there was much accolades to all of the citizen soldiers that were out there over the last week, but boy, I'll tell you, they helped and did a yeoman's job as well. And I just thought that they all ought to be recognized as part of that team effort. They did a great job.
Very good. Motions, orders, and resolutions? Petitions, memorials, remontances? Counsel Gattro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge two memorials. Our former city council, Tom Fabrizio, and his wife Kathy. Tom lost his mother, Aunt Fabrizio, earlier this week. I know many of us attended services. And not only does she leave behind Tom and Kathy, but she has a sister, Claire Maloney, and she's grandmother. And I know that she was an active member of the Sons of Italy as well. And I know that the Fabrizio family and folks in West Quincy will certainly miss her. I also wanted to make mention of another passing, and that's Antonio Falco. Many of us know Tina Falco as Tina Cahill, wife of Tim Cahill. But Tina and her siblings, Tony, Lisa, and Juliana, lost their father earlier this week. And Antonio's wife, of course, is Lucy, and he worked for 35 years at New England Steel Tank Company in Quincy. And he loved his family very much, enjoyed spending time between Florida and the city of Quincy, as well as traveling to Italy. And I know it's been a tough year, certainly for the Cahills, and it's a big loss for the Falcos. And I just wanted to say that the city council is keeping them in our thoughts and prayers as well.
Thank you. While we're on the subject of petitions, memorials, and remontances, there's two other ones I'd like to acknowledge. One is John McGowan, who was a gentleman who lived in North Quincy in the same house he was born in for 92 years. And he was the manager of the Hancock Bank in North Quincy Center. Before that, I mean, in North Quincy. Before that, it was the Quincy Trust Company. And just a fine, fine gentleman who could see around town, just a friend to all. And the other gentleman I'd like to acknowledge is Bill Schmidt. Bill Schmidt was from Park Street in Wallaston, and he and his family were longtime volunteers with the Boy Scouts and with the Sanians Parish. Just a wonderful man, a wonderful family. So I acknowledge the passing of those two great Americans. Counsel Coughlin.
And certainly not to be forgotten is Bill Barron, formerly deputy chief and the father of our present chief, Joe Barron. The Barron family has contributed a lot in terms of public service in this city, especially when you look at the fire department over history. So certainly a loss to the Barron family, but, you know, a loss to the city in terms of the service that that family has provided over the years. So it's been a lot of losses this past week. It's been a tough week for everyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Motions, orders, and resolutions? Counsel Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the chair of the Veterans Committee here in Quincy, I would just like to recognize on Thursday, the Vietnam Combat Veterans Combined Armed Forces Day will be taking place. And of course, on this week, that we think of so many first responders and so many folks who work so hard to keep us safe, it's fitting that we honor these wonderful men and women. On Thursday, there will be a ceremony at the Memorial Clock Tower at Marina Bay at 2:00 p.m. And I know that they would love to see the folks of Quincy who are able to go and show their support for these fine Americans who keep us safe day in and day out and who really deserve our thanks and appreciation. So just wanted to give that a shout out.
Thank you. Counselor Gattro.
I just wanted to acknowledge, in the spirit of events, Quincy Community Action, which does an extraordinary amount for the city, is having their annual meeting and awards ceremony on Thursday night at 6:00 o'clock. And there, you know, a lot of families are neat. We don't always, you know, talk about it around this well, but there are a lot of needy families out there, and QCAP does a great job. So they do their annual event out at the Elks, and they recognize some terrific people. So I just wanted to give them some recognition for a job well done.
Very good. As we get into the next item on the agenda, which is scheduling, the first and most important item on the agenda for scheduling is next Tuesday, April 30th, get out and vote. It's the most important thing you can do, the most civic duty you have. Get out and vote. And I say that loudly to the people at home. Very, very important. This is a very important election. So get out and vote. The next city council meeting is Monday, May 6th. We will have an ordinance committee meeting at 6:00, 6:30 by Counsel Coughlin, followed by a city council meeting at 7:30. At that meeting, we will have, the mayor will be presenting the fiscal 2014 budget, and we will also have our annual visit by the state delegation. Monday, the 13th, we have tentatively scheduled for a finance committee meeting to discuss that reviewing the budget. And on Monday, the 20th, we will have a 6:00 meeting of the Special Permit Granting Authority. At that point in time, we hopefully will be able to take a look at closing out the CMAT application. We have a meeting of the city council that evening. In the following week, the night after Memorial Day, which I believe is the 28th, is it, Mr. Shea? Tuesday, the 28th is also a finance committee meeting.
Right.
We will have a finance committee meeting that evening. Monday, June 3rd, is North Quincy High graduation. So the city council meeting will be at 8:30 that evening. And Wednesday night, June 4th, is Quincy High graduation. And then we have another finance committee meeting on June the 10th. So those are some of the upcoming meetings that I am aware of. And in the meantime, we're going to try to squeeze in a downtown update for Counsel Gattro on the council agenda. So seeing no other business to come before this order, I adjourn on a motion by Counsel Coughlin, seconded by Counsel Gattro. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Very, very good.